To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for coming. Karen, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, so, um, any suggestions for the minutes? Oh, go ahead. Yeah, you just fill out a quick form with your date and the subject matter and we'd be happy to read. Mrs. Cole, will you pick a line to the audio booth?
Hi. I've stood up here three years to fight the first wind through Bristol Warren. Today, I'm discouraged at the inconvenience. Things I've fought for three years now seem futile compared to what's going on. The small successes waiting in there send to the state of what's going on. And when Dr. Andrew published that thing about community, a community does not, a community of teachers and parents does not allow parents to have teacher parent meetings. At Hugh Cole, teachers refuse to give appearance. I have been asking for a teacher parent meeting with my daughter for six months. I went to Dr. Andrew because they first said you need his permission. He said, "That's crazy. I gave you permission." Then I was told I had to write a letter. Then I was told the letter didn't state exactly the reasons why I want the meeting. And I had a bullet point by the reasons. Then I was told I needed it notarized if I were to have a teacher parent meeting. Finally, I called Rye. Rye said, "Are you a minority? Is English your second language? Or do you have a 504 or an IEP? Otherwise, we can't help you." I went home and I thought, "Oh, my gosh." And then I thought, "Oh, my daughter has a 504." So I called the school and I said I demand a meeting. So they, because the social worker said, "Demand a meeting." She's been sliding in this subject. What's helping her? They keep telling me everything's fine. The report card keeps getting worse. So I went in for a meeting. I went, my husband and I went in for a meeting and the teacher brought two union lawyers with her. We had the social worker, Ms. Hayden, two union lawyers, and the principal. And it didn't really seem like we got anywhere, but at least we had the meeting. It was over. They said it was thirty-four more days of school. The teacher said she wouldn't make accommodations. They said another third grade teacher wouldn't make accommodations for my daughter and help her. Four days later, on a Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m., my husband and I received multiple calls from Hugh Cole principal and texts telling us that we have to be at Hugh Cole by noon to meet with a lawyer because there's a family suing us for things that were discussed during that personal meeting with my daughter. I am told that one person that was at the meeting, I don't know who it was, if it was the teacher, I assume it was the teacher because who else would know, there was a discussion with her regarding my daughter fighting over a messy desk. And I took a photo of the desk. And I said, "I don't think the desk is that messy. She's been crying at home. Can you please explain?" In that photo, there is a little snippet of a photo of another student's desk that has no name on it, has no information on it. Someone from that meeting called the parents and I was dispersing derogatory information about their child. And I was told that we had to show up at Hugh Cole at Saturday at noon. My husband and I refused. And I wrote the school committee. I talked to Dr. Andrew. And so I'm trying to figure out how I continue to keep my kids in the school where teachers won't meet with us, teachers are giving information to other people, teachers are showing up in UNIRAPs, teachers are refusing to modify curriculum for kids. And even my son, every time I have a meeting with Dr. Andrew within three days or four days later, I'll get a call from the principal that my son's getting written up for something. Four of those were falsified. Once we went into them, well, teachers said, "Oh, talk." I said, "Who told you to write that up?" "Someone told me to write that up. Talk to my lawyer." Said, "Did you see my son do that?" "Nope. Someone told me to write it up. Talk to my lawyer." That's what I'm getting. So I'm like, I fought for things for the entire community, for all the students, and now I'm getting the backlash of this community for fighting for those things on my children. And of course, at some point, I'm gonna back down because I can't watch my children get hurt for me standing up for things. So I've actually removed my old SIS one private next to it. I haven't decided what to do with the other two yet. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Caitlin. Okay, and next I have to ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the April 2nd, 2019.
Motion to approve, Madam Jones, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, please have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 1st, 2019.
Motion to approve, Madam Jones, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And now I would like to introduce Dr. Dana Haswicki, who I first met when myself and Carly Breach and Christine Holman and Nicole Dill, KMS, and Leslie Anderson went to Cumberland Middle School to visit and tour their alternative learning program there and to meet with several people at the administration of that ALP team. So, thank you so much for coming. Dana's gonna be helping us here in Bristol Warren. She's been contracted by the district to work with her team on a multi-tiered system system of supports. Thank you. Here in the district. So, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for having me come speak with the school committee. I brought some friends to discuss what we're doing as well. These are two special education teachers, Connie Hansa and Colton Gallo, that are helping with our tier three supports. So I thought it would be nice to have some report directly from the field. And Christine also to report out on some of the changes that we're making at the school. So I actually wanted to start off by talking about two parts of the brain that are really important for kids' regulation and functioning at school. And that's our frontal lobes, which is the part of the brain that helps us regulate, stay calm, organize, plan, and pay attention. So our frontal lobes handle executive functioning skills, which is how kids learn. And then the other part of the brain that's really important for functioning at school, and I think it's one of the important parts of the dysregulation that we've been seeing, is the limbic system of the brain. And that's the part of the brain that handles intense emotions, including anxiety, fearfulness, and anger. So our main goal right now is to help students get more regulated so that they can bring their frontal lobes online and do the hard work of learning. So what we're doing is trying to really think about having a reset of two schools, of Pickingham Middle School and Hugh Cole Elementary School, where we're trying to help really have an organized framework and plan to increase regulation of all the students. And that's called multi-tiered systems of supports. And I do wanna say that as I've come in, I do see that there's a lot of good work that's been done. There's a lot of initiatives that have been taken to help students with their behavior and their regulation. But one of the things that's missing is like an overall framework that all of those interventions and strategies can fit within. And when we think about multi-tiered systems of supports, that's something that's already going on in your school district and being very successful when we think of response to intervention. So on the academic side, there's been a lot of groundwork that's already been laid in terms of putting universal strategies in place and then identifying kids that might not be performing as well. And our proposal is to really put that in place on the behavioral side as well so that we're talking about academics and behavior at the same time and using the framework that's established already for the response to intervention on the academic side to also support behavior. So at Pickingham Middle School, there's actually, right built into the weekly schedule, there's a block already set aside for that. So it's very easy to integrate that into the daily workings of the school. So, however, I think that one of the most important things that we need to do right now is really think about professional development and changing the lens that we're seeing the behaviors through. In some ways, there's been a lot of dysregulation, like on a macro level, like on a bigger level, where people are feeling dysregulated and upset and concerned when the behaviors happen in class and then how to deal with them. And I think it's really important that we kind of consider the whole big picture as we're moving forward. So we've already started at Pickingham Middle School. We've had several opportunities for professional development. And we're really moving forward with trauma-informed practices, which are all interventions that are designed to help adults and students regulate themselves. When we see acting out behaviors at school, the adults feel upset and have their limbic systems activated as well. And I think that's really one of the main concerns is feeling safe at school. So we're talking about how we can support good executive functioning skills and good regulation for the entire student body. And when we think about our multi-tiered systems of support, that's thinking about a universal team which captures about eighty-five percent of the student body. And those are just strategies and interventions that we use with all students as best practices. And we do have a handout. That we brought. This is a little handout that we call PDIS on a page, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And what it really addresses is thinking about how can we make connections with students? How do we foster appropriate behaviors? We would pick some global behaviors that really align with the social, emotional learning goals for the state of Rhode Island. It's things like being respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. Like they're kind of goals that win a compass, like all kinds of behaviors that allow you to be successful at school. And what we know, like, so in my everyday life, I'm actually a clinical neuropsychologist. I've been doing that for about twenty years. That's why I'm so interested in those brain functions and the regulation. So when we think about those universal strategies, what we're trying to do is enhance regulation across the entire school in all of the classrooms with all of the adults as well as the kids. And when we're thinking about doing more intensive interventions, that brings us up to tier-two level interventions, which is like needing, like still being able to remain in the classroom but having some inappropriate behaviors that we can start kind of identifying and addressing. And then the most intensive level supports for kids that are maybe being disrespectful or disruptive in class would be considered tier-three. So we think usually there's about five to ten percent of kids might be in that tier-two level of interventions. And then the very tip of the pyramid, like three to five percent of kids receiving more intensive interventions. So, do you have something to add? So, even though I got involved, you know, like closer to the end of the school year, we were feeling like it would be really important to kind of show how these interventions can work at school and make a difference and also build confidence in the teachers that the strategies really work, that they're effective, and that it's not like we use different strategies for the most intense kids. It's actually that we use similar interventions that we do for universal team, but we increase the frequency and intensity of the interventions for kids that need more supports. And we just started a few weeks ago with a classroom where we identified some students that were really struggling. And because we were kind of doing a pilot program to get us ready and see some of the needs and interventions, two teachers volunteered to divide their schedules because they know the students and have relationships already. One of the things that we really think of as the foundation of any intervention that we're gonna be doing is really having that adult-student connection and having those relationships. I have to say that I've been really, I support programs in over ten different school districts, all the way from pre-kay through high school. So I have a lot of experience in working with children. I've helped roll out a lot of programs. Some of them are well-established for over ten years. Some of them are newer programs that we've started this year. But I've been really pleased to see like how hungry the kids are for that connection and relationship and how they're willing to alter their behavior already, just in a few weeks, to kind of get their needs met. So when we look at this from like that brain-based model, we really think of like, what are the students' needs? How can we meet those needs so that they can get better regulated? And then how do we build up their skills so that they can be more effective in their general classroom environment? So we're not thinking about self-contained programs for these kids, but really an opportunity for children to have a chance to reset if they get dysregulated. And we do strategies like asking them what they need, asking that, taking away their audience, like removing them from the classrooms if they're having a hard time, giving them a private place to debrief, kind of process information, giving them a chance to regulate themselves for a period of time so they're not going back to class upset, and then returning them back to class. And a big part of that is really the academic piece. You know, we're in a school setting. The goal is for students to be learning at school. And our responsibility as educators is really to be teaching kids. And I have to say, it's been so wonderful working with these special education teachers. One of the things that we're finding is that many of the students that are struggling the most and showing disruptive behaviors have some really significant gaps in their learning. And I think that for some of them, they've struggled for years with their behaviors and it's pulled them out of some, you know, key instructional times. But when we're providing them with that targeted instruction, and we have like some eighth grade math quiz here that's about to do all the work that they're doing in sixth and seventh, like it's just like a really good representation. We're seeing like kids really start to buckle down and get some work done. And I was wondering if you two could just share a little bit? Because we've had some really significant little episodes already that show some of the positive things.
If you just extend what we were saying about that, the direct instruction that we're able to give them when they do come into the connections room, even if it's for about twenty minutes, we're able to give them that explicit, direct instruction to whatever skill they're working on, and they are starving for it. I mean, we have some of the kids that, well, the kids that have the most challenging behaviors in the school, and they are listening, they're engaged, they're actively participating in that lesson. And I know it's one-on-one, maybe two-to-one ratio, but it's working and they're willing to go back into class and complete and finish their task. So I am really seeing this as, I didn't expect to see such a positive outcome so quickly. But it's true. I think they're starving for it, Dana. I think that's the key. They want structure. They don't know it. But now that we've provided them with that room where we can take them in, talk to them, reset them, and give them that instruction. And our expectations are very high. So we're expecting them to sit, to listen, to attend, not roam around the room and, you know, do whatever they want on their phone. Like, that's not happening. And yes, the first day was a little rough, but the second day, it was amazing to see how well they responded to us. So I am feeling really good about this.
So Dana was just asking me to tell a story about one of the students that came in today. He's one of our tougher students, and he has been avoiding classes all the time. We're lucky that we do have a teacher assistant that is sometimes available to go into classes and not only to reset kids where they are because we don't want them to meet with people who come down to the room and miss out on academic experiences. And he was one of our things that tend to avoid classes. And she's been going in with him periodically and is helping him along. But he's also come downstairs and brought work and has shared, you know, "I'm just stupid. It was like, I just, I don't understand." And he would never say that around the name of his peers. It's how he said, "I'm nothing. I'm never gonna become anything because I don't know." And there was another student who was a sixth grader who shared, "The only reason I pass is because I cop them from my friends. The people don't know that I don't know how to do it." And she's not as disabled as we would think, but she has very poor self-esteem, and we're building that up. And she's accepting how students that are just completely dysregulated come down. And it's not, they're getting a punishment, but we're talking them through what happened. How are you feeling? What you need to do to make this better? And they're learning through that experience of just communicating with adults. And we're showing them there is a different way to act and how to receive things appropriately. Even something as simple as if you want help, if you want to access the connections room, there's an appropriate way to do it. You just can't leave class unlocked out. There's an appropriate protocol. And they're all being very respectful. We actually all receive honor gift cards in the program. The other day, from one of our toughest customers, and they were quite touching, various thoughts, but I think.
Conversations that we can have for the behaviors. I mean, it's, they really respond and listen and change their behaviors. I feel like they already started changing some of these behaviors.
And then calling each other out. They are correcting each other.
And then the administrators ended it. My walkie-talkie is not squeaking all day long. We have a way to communicate with each other. It's called Google Hangout. So I actually was up in Hingham, Mass. today doing the master's schedule, but I can keep in touch with them all day long through Google Hangout. I can see who was having a good day, who needed some help. One child was trying to get their way into connections and I had to just, they were a little busy, so I said to the teacher, "This child's not really part of this, so they need to do X, Y, and Z." So the, I wanna say the temperature is going from like a hundred and twenty degrees back down to, you know, a nice comfortable room temperature. So as you guys said, you know, the amount of success that we've seen in a very short period of time is incredible. I was watching the little hangouts and one student was requesting to go into connections, was doing it in an appropriate manner. This is a child that liked to bolt, just, you know, "I don't wanna do this right now. I'm outta here." And they're starting to use their words and they're starting to, you know, be proactive for their learning and what they need.
So you may have noticed that we're not talking that much about disciplinary strategies yet. And I, we did bring a manual, a draft of a manual for our connections program to share with you. And it does include that we need to follow all of the school policies and procedures and rules. But what I know as a neuropsychologist is that you can't punish the limbic system of our brain. Like, when you get dysregulated, that's not a part of the brain that responds to speech, logic, reason, or discipline. So what we're doing is really focusing on the regulation and on shaping kids' behaviors. And I think it's so important to note that as adults, we're constantly shaping behaviors and it can happen very quickly. For example, I think Nicole mentioned, our first day was a little exciting. I think the kids were really excited and wondering what was going on. And it just got like really busy for a little while. So at the end of the day, we had a little meeting, like, "What are we gonna do? How are we gonna get them more regulated?" And it was just really, you know, those basic skills. We wrote all the expectations on the board. We had gone over them as a group. We brought each student in, like, and more individually, really talked about like what we could offer them and how they could access it. And even right from that second day, we had a much more successful day. And I think that's part of having that consistency and really firm expectations is that it may seem like we're talking a lot about meeting students' needs, but we're doing it in a way that is really appropriate for a school environment. So we really talk about our connections classroom, which is the name of our program, that that's a classroom in our school. So all those same good behaviors that you're supposed to see in the bigger part of the school, we expect to see in our classroom. So we're not disrupting our classmates that are working. We are, you know, acknowledge that we're working with students that often have very oppositional behaviors. We may have to put out a suggestion, move back a little bit, give them a moment to think about it, and then reintroduce it or offer them two different choices. But I've been amazed really at how polite and respectful the students have been to us. I'm hearing a lot of like good manners, a lot of please and thank you. And just being pretty respectful. What we have seen is that, it's not like the problems have gone away. We're still seeing escalations during the school day, but we're seeing students being able to reset a little more quickly and also not disrupting their peers as they're doing that. That first day, we had that feeling a little bit of like they were getting each other stirred up. So we really looked at our schedule and thought about how can we kind of pace things out if kids have schedule breaks, because some kids take it at the beginning of class, some at the end of class. So we're really able to not have it get too busy in the classroom, too overwhelming. Are there any questions? Mr. Rector?
Thank you very much for coming this evening and sharing. You know, I was able to observe a little bit of a classroom last week. And it was amazing that to see these students engaged in their work and understanding what it is that they were there to do. What do you find that the percentages of students that go into connections are able to return to their class in that setting? And what percentage need to stay in the connections room for the entire kid's day? Are we looking at ninety percent are able to go back, a hundred percent are able to go back, Carter?
I don't think we've had anybody staying there the entire day because of yet.
We've only had one. And one of the things that we do instead of an out-of-school suspension, we do an in-school suspension where they're there to do work and they have their lunch down there. They can access, you know, any of the things that we have with the classroom. They can receive extras of their work, but they are in that room. The student that stayed, she kept asking to leave to go back to class, you know, which was a big sign, but at the same time, it was good for me to say, you know, "This is your consequence for doing X, Y, and Z yesterday." And so she could clearly see that and hear that, that this is the result of your behavior. And it feels a little uncomfortable because you can't leave and you're constantly on. She did her work all when you go to the classroom. We gave her a couple of breaks, but she completed, what did, five, six assignments? I mean, that's big for her. So.
We also have a.
It has to stay after school.
Yeah.
We also had a lot of conversation about that actual consequence because it was really something that we technically could have put the person out of school for. What is that gonna do for us? And so we have this program. She's part of it. Let's have her in school all day. She monitored by the teachers. She wasn't allowed to have lunch with her friends. And it was like, like Dana's, I'm sorry, like Nicole said, she got all the work done.
So what if she wasn't part of the connections program?
No, she could have possibly had, that person could have possibly had in-school suspension, which would put her in our in-school suspension room. And that's monitored by teachers.
So I can kind of sense where you're going with that, Brian. So it's something that I was thinking about. You're probably wondering like, this isn't a very intensive, that top-tier intervention. How does it benefit our entire school? And I think that one of our goals is that when you have those, that top tier of the most escalated students is they can just cause like a big ruckus in the school. It kind of dysregulates the whole feeling of the school. As she mentioned about that temperature being really high. So we're trying to keep those kids that really need that specialized instruction in their emotional regulation and behavioral regulation and kind of keep them in like a space where it's not the main office. It's not happening out in the hallways. Regulate them and return them to the room. But we're also making a really big effort to keep disrespect and dysregulation out of the classroom. So we've talked to all of the teachers. Part of the children entering the program was that we're going and meeting in the team level for each team. So they really have a chance to talk about their student, what the things are that that student struggles with, to share their work. Because it's really, it's academic, right? Once you regulate, even if you're not ready to go back to class, we make them get back to work right away, which I think is part of why they're not hanging up there all day. Like, they're ready to like get going and get back to class. But what we're trying to do is just to help everyone feel safer and more regulated so that learning can go on more readily in class. So while teachers were trying very hard to kind of manage things as long as they could and then often the students wouldn't be removed from the room as they've really crossed a line. Like, they've really said something disrespectful. Maybe they have, you know, really transgressed in some way. Now we're saying, "If you see that it's one of our students that we've already know that needs these extra supports, catch it early." So when you first see them starting to get dysregulated, it may be that they're getting antsy, they're looking around, they're not doing their work. You just gave them a direction and they haven't followed it. They have suddenly think disrespectful yet, like they're not complying. We want to be contacted at that moment. And then you can either push somebody in. We have a paraprofessional and a behavior specialist. We can have them go, just maybe help out the kid a little bit or have them step up in the hallway if it's not a big issue. So we're really like preventing that from even happening in the classroom, which is just really great for the teachers and to the other students. I had a chance to talk with some of the. I had a chance to talk with some of the Generation Citizen students, like I was one of the interviewees. And that was something that they were, I really explained to them like what our model is about teaching and learning. They had a lot of questions about discipline. But when I explained about the regulation piece, that seemed to really resonate with them. And they quickly kind of understood like where we were going with that.
Is what we're doing, what you're doing in connections, is that something that can be modeled? Maybe for our Tier One and Tier Two students in an ISS-type, room-type setting? Or does it, does it need to stay in this kind of other area?
No. The reason that we want to have that multi-tiered systems of support is that we really want to spread this word like throughout the entire school. So we're gonna really give a very dedicated push this whole next entire school year with professional development opportunities, both more full-day opportunities and then shorter opportunities like faculty meeting, grade level meetings, different times that are built into the schedule, to just be talking about all of these kinds of regulation strategies and interventions that teachers can use in their classroom. Also have the opportunity, something that I was thinking about today is, you know, I feel like one thing that is not in the schedule right now that's just something to think about for next year would be a little bit of time, even if it was 10 minutes, to have like for a home room or end of the day, where we could really be like working on some of these executive functioning skills for everybody. Like those skills help the straight A student all the way to the kids that struggle with the regulation. So if, when we think about what are the, what are the tenants of positive behavioral interventions and supports? Those work for every single student and then they just become intensified. So the reason that I feel like I can't just come in and do a Tier Three is that I need all that support because I want to send the kids back out to class. So we're effectively gonna be training the entire faculty in an ongoing way. But I, I've made myself very available and really invite people to like ask questions, to come and talk with me, to talk with the teachers, because we're developing kind of like a core of experts right in the school that we can turn to. So when we think about, like somebody already asked, well, this year, like what about the kids that are Tier Two and a half? Like they're not quite at that third level, but like they're tough. So we're gonna go in, do some classroom observations, maybe make some specific targeted recommendations for that student. But we really, we want this to be helpful for everyone, for all the students and the teachers.
This is Reece and Mr. Rector. Thank you. Thank you all for coming in and explaining the connection to process. And I just wanted to acknowledge publicly, I know how much time and energy and effort that all of you standing there are putting in this program. And we're so grateful, having been involved from the very beginning of this and watching it develop has been so exciting. And I'm thrilled that you're hard to see successes and students responding. Super grateful for the progress that keeps taking place.
I'd like to say the same there. I appreciate all of you coming in and giving us some feedback. My question, perhaps you can't give the answer tonight. And if you can't, at the end of the school year, if you can, what is the percentage of volume? Looking at the Tier Three students, just percentage, only in front of like the, same thing with teachers as far as that volume to Tier One. And I'm just making sure administrator staff, all staff, also the venue, everything. I understand professional development goes through to, those three groups have an interesting number of percentage of volume that's aligned. And if you have some issues with small percentages of that, that's not high. Maybe determine what makes it an issue.
So I feel like I have a general answer to that. So I think just as we think of the pyramid, right, of like interventions of support for kids, those are really based on like population models. And I kind of think of that, like even with our staff, like any, any standpoint with the population, like the vast majority of people are really have great skills and will just benefit from like universal strategies. And then there's some teachers that do struggle, like it's just not their most comfortable thing to be redirecting behaviors or managing stressful situations. However, those are all, these are, everything that we're doing are skills that can be learned over time. And I have to say that just from all of the, I've been in a lot of meetings, several faculty meetings now, smaller meetings, the subcommittee meetings, and they're very intense and very heated. But I have to say that I've been incredibly impressed just with people's eye contact, engagement. As I'm speaking with them about these topics that we're discussing here tonight, I have people with me, like they're nodding, they're reacting, they're responding. They're coming up afterwards, asking really great questions. They're asking if they can be part of the MTSS team. So some of the teachers that initially I think have some of the biggest concerns have really become part of the solution already. And so I feel like we're off to like a really fantastic start. And I feel like this is such an opportunity for the school district to really turn around in a way that many school districts don't have that. Because many times it's a choice. It's like, okay, do we want to do this? Do we want to go in this direction? I don't know, maybe not. It's gonna be a lot of work. And I feel like this is an opportunity where we've really had to present that this is a big challenge. This is a big kind of traumatic experience that the districts has gone through. And that's a time that when you really are able to show a path forward and show effective strategies that people can see starting to work really like in a couple days, like already things are starting to be effective, it's really powerful. To start from one point and then have movement like that. So I'm already, like as I said, I work, consult with a number of different school districts. And I think that this is one of the most engaged, like when you think of the whole faculty, like just how engaged everyone is. When I went around and just did those smaller level meetings at the end of last week, just connecting with specific teams, there was not one person that had anything to say. Nobody was saying, "This isn't gonna work. This happened, you didn't do this, you didn't do that." It was all about positive things and ways that we could make it work better and asking questions. So I thought that was incredibly positive too, because that would have been a good opportunity, right? You're in that small room with your closer colleagues, it's more private. The people were still really positive. And they were saying little successes, like the student actually raised her hand and asked, you know, like if she could do it. Or she came back from meeting with you and told me what all the rules are. So I was, you know, I almost dumped over the rule, but she let me know like what the procedure was. So I think.
We've had lots of special moments.
Yes. Yeah, so. Yes, we've had some kids stay in their specials, like, you know, like. Right.
And we've been recording all these celebrations in a Google form just so we can keep track. But there is something every day that I can, I can write in. And I'm not in there as much as wanting, I'm only in there two to three periods. Only one day on the cycle within three periods, the other days only in there two periods. And I can write something positive on that Google form every day.
And then I read the Google form and so I can during lunchtime say, "Hey, good job." And how do you know? Well, because we're constantly in communication about what's happening.
And I think our colleagues are very involved a lot today. We have stood up in crisis, putting out what our teacher assistant called me. She's trying to be crazy. Her limbic system was out of control. Ironically, the girl wasn't in the fetal position crying. She was in the fetal position laughing like crazy while the teachers were saying, "It's not okay, we're just gonna go, you know, you said you need to do this." Kind of ignore the behavior for a little while so the girl's kind of still laughing and carrying on and waiting for our audience to continue. And we're like, "Why are they so mean to me?" Because we gave, we gave our audience a teacher palpitations and true ones. Just what made her up? So it's just a little.
So some of the strategies that we use, we're seeing a lot of attention maintained behavior. We're seeing a lot of students that are real attention seekers, which can grate, if you're like one of those A students and you're raising your hand all the time and trying to get the teacher's attention. We're working with kids that have really experienced a lot of trauma in their life and have not always had the most positive attention. And for them, any attention is good attention. They just want adult attention. And the way that they've been getting it, for a long time, it's really like reinforced to their behavior is to act out. So we're really trying to like shape those behaviors that, you know, you can ask for this. You just say what you maybe, you don't have to like get yourself kicked out of class. You can ask to take a break. You can ask for some support in class. And however, I want to say like, it's not that it's like an easy thing to do. Like with kids that really have true behavioral disorders, like they're really being disruptive and not compliant, we can't, like there's a strategy called plant ignoring that you might do in the classroom. So you've got a new G kid and you're kind of like, "I'm not gonna give any attention to that little psycho." But the kids that we're working with, they up the ante again, again, until they're like on the floor giggling and dysregulated. So at that point, you can't ignore that because it's so disruptive. And if they have an audience of any sort, it can really, you know, like they're not gonna stop as long as they have an audience. So there's things that we can do, like having this different environment. We're being able to go into an environment where a student is, we might need to clear out the other students. But the kids actually respond really quickly. And I've even done, like sometimes like kids will try to get my attention. I'll be like right there, I'll just be like, "Nope." You can have my more of an attention as soon as you're behaving appropriately. And then we kind of shower them with like kindness and warmth. So we're really trying to make them feel the difference. When you roll around to the floor in middle school, you just have attention withheld. And then when you start complying, "Can I help you? What do you need? Why don't you come back? Do you need a drink of water? Let's get our workout." And it just feels so differently towards them. It's very, very enticing to them to want that more positive attention. But you often, you just can't do that, you know, the classroom teacher, you have your whole class to teach. And the whole class is reacting to these ridiculous behaviors.
Obviously, you're aware of the press that we got before you arrived. We had a lot of people that were saying, "Well, I'm not gonna set my statistics up here." I want you to know that I have six granddaughters that are gonna go to school. And I have two sons that are gonna go. And I believe in this school. And I have to tell you, I believe the two young ladies are standing right behind you very much. You are very lucky, Dad, very sensitive women behind you and helping you. But I also want to say, I want to thank Erin for all she's done in bringing you here and all she's done in the background and getting this process going, right? Because we need, you need positive stuff going out there to the press. We had so much negative, they never want to write the broad positive stuff across, right? But we need them to know that you are doing the job that we need to be done. And we're going to get it through. And next year will be a different school and everything will be fine. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you. Mr. Rector?
I have to reiterate first the abusive thank yous for the work that you're doing. And I would say that just in watching the presentation tonight, the emotion and energy with which all of you are presenting and talking about the things that you're doing and the results that you're seeing is, you know, it's really heartwarming to see, you know. You can tell that every single one of you up there really feels it. It's not just something that you're doing. And that is really encouraging and something that you don't see every day. I do have one question that is, that's been asked of you, you know, maybe I have an answer for now, but I think it's an ongoing request of you, which is, I think, you know, from my perspective, not to speak for the entire committee, we want to be as supportive as we possibly can of the efforts that are going on within the schools. And I know that, you know, through the work of Aaron and others on the committee that we've been somewhat involved in helping you along to this point. But is there anything else that you can think of now that you would look for for support from the school committee as a body that would help you better develop and implement programs that you're putting in a place, not just to kick you under the school, but also with people? And then when there is, if there is one now, I would invite you to let us know in any way that you can when there is something that comes up that you think the school committee, you know, in the role that we play, would be able to be supportive of the development and implementation of these programs and all these other stuff.
I just want to thank you all so much because I feel like that everyone's been very supportive. Like the administrators, school committee, has all been like such a partner in like these ideas that we're trying to like put forward. So I think we're feeling like your passion and commitment as well as. One thing that I just wanted to say is that I appreciate so much like the trust that you've given me to like help your school. And I really want to say like I do bring like expertise and like a lot of passion to this. Like it's something that I really care about deeply, but I feel like this is, the work is really being done by the school, like by the teachers, by the administrators, and that I'm a helper for that. Like I have a clear kind of vision in my head because I've seen it happen in like multiple different settings. So I really have this like picture of what it can be like, how, how I'm making things forward. And it's about working with everybody at school to like individualize it for this like particular need and this particular intensity. But I feel like I have such like great partners in doing that. But it's really a collaboration. It's not like I'm coming in and it's like the D A M plan. It's really about like the Kikumia Middle School Plan and then the Huqul Plan. And they're not gonna look identical, they're gonna have different needs at elementary level versus a middle school level. But we are already starting to think about some, you know, brief interventions that we can put just to kind of like let people know that there's more good things coming. We're gonna be doing work over the summer for kind of planning and getting our systems more in place. And then I think next year, it's gonna be so exciting to start off with like the good professional development and then really moving forward. I'm really excited. Any other sudden questions?
I just wanted to add that we didn't plan it, but every day we've been briefing after school. And with that comes a lot of good professional development for us. Dana gives us a lot of, I don't want to say good ideas. I mean, these are interventions that she's teaching us that have been researched up through her to other schools. So I gained so much knowledge as to how to interact with students who have these really challenging behaviors. So thank you Dana for that. Christine comes in, which she can't, she's so busy. But Matt was there today. So we're definitely seeing a presence from administration. We have to work with them in order for this to work. Because there are times that students are not regulating as quickly as we need them to be and we need their support. So and there they are.
So I would like to take them away. And I look to you guys and you say, "No, I think, I think we can get this child regulated. Give you one more shot." So I respect the work, but they're doing it as well. So it's really been a very solid team effort.
A true collaboration, definitely. And like I said, those debriefs at the end of the day were not planned, but they are absolutely necessary for us to reflect and change some things the following day, make things better. So it's definitely a work in progress. We're seeing a lot of great things happening. Thank you. I just want to thank the whole school committee for supporting us. Dr. Andrea, Diane, now Leslie, they're coming to the subcommittee meetings, meeting with Dana and I know. So I just appreciate that this, everything has moved forward in the way that it has. I can't be any happier because this was my vision when I first spoke to you after that Friday. But I just, I feel like this was the vision. And now that we have it, I can see the positive effects it's had on the school and the climate in our building. And teachers are very, very thankful, very thankful. When I go to escort a student out of the classroom, I'm able to have a very quick conversation. It's discreet. And when I bring them back, they thank me, the student thanks me. It's, they're very polite, you're right Dana. Students and teachers just are happier and I think because they feel safer.
You can see like I wanted to give you those, we talked about like our policies and procedures just to show you that like we're really intent on like putting stuff in writing, like having that structure, having that consistency. But we're even scripting little things. Here's something you could say when the student returns to your class. So it's like we're just like kind of practicing like all those skills until it just becomes second nature.
Dr. Assa Liki, I just have one quick, kind of more specific question before I thank you all for you. But I was thinking about when you were talking about how you can evacuate a child from class who's exhibiting disruptive behaviors. And I know that at the elementary level, and I know you're just kind of getting your feet wet with your team at Huqul, but we're really gonna be focusing there as well in the coming year. I know that sometimes there, they do classroom evacuations. And I'm just wondering if a program like this kind of changes, kind of flips that on its head because there is that other space? Or are those decisions made based on different situations?
Yeah, so, um, with elementary age kids, we do take a different approach. Because often, um, I've been doing this for 20 years, and I'm seeing like a real difference in like the dysregulation, especially with our, our youngest students, like kindergarten and first grade students. They're coming to school, and I, I think like, Marianne and Leslie kind of touched on this as well. They're coming to school, like sometimes they haven't gone on to preschool, but they've been in the hospital already. So, um, we do a lot of very explicit teaching and skill building with our youngsters first. And sometimes that might mean that they have like a little period of time where they just come to us and we teach them like how to function at school and how to leave the classroom like appropriately. So they might undergo a little period of time where we're really doing a lot of explicit instruction and building a relationship with them. So then if they do become dysregulated, one, we catch it before they're really dug in. Because if they're already dysregulated, it's hard to communicate with that limbic system. We don't want to let that take over. Um, and then we're able to kind of like also push in more adult support for kids that aren't quite ready to do that. So there's a trained, um, skilled adult right there that comes like, oh, it's time that we're gonna go take a break and just kind of smoothly, you know, have them exit with a goal that if they don't become that dysregulated, they're gonna get, be more quickly returned to class as well. But for our, for our littler kids, they do tend to initially spend a little bit more time out of class because they just don't have that sense of like school-appropriate behaviors. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, thank you so much for coming. You all know how dedicated I am to this and how, I, I mean, I just share your passion because I think with everything that happened, as Dana was saying, you kind of come out of a, I mean, you can sort of call it a trauma, maybe, or a dysreg- it's sort of, sometimes I think it takes that kind of a hurricane to rebuild and to do something really important, um, for, for the teachers and the kids. And I think the school committee and superintendent were, and all of you, most importantly, are dedicated to putting these systems in place, um, to make our schools better places to learn and, um, and to grow emotionally as well as academically. So thank you so much, and keep up the good work, and I can't wait to see what happens.
Thank you.
So it looks like now I need a motion to go into, um, executive session pursuant to open meeting laws forty-two dash forty-six dash five eight one for personal recommendations and administrator job requirements.
Show me.